In other words, why were we doing it? Because it's costing the town quite a bit of money to dispose of a mobile home that's deteriorated. So we, the town voted to always foreclose in the mobile home. There is a process of waiving the foreclosure, but I understand from SISAT, our treasurer, tax collector, that it's only good for one year and the whole state, the whole town has to agree to the, to waive the foreclosure. So you would have to do this every year.
Every year, over and over and over.
Every year, which would be...
For each property, you can't sell a blanket.
Yes, and so it's just every property you decide you're going to waive. So that's probably not going to happen. And I would, and you told me that the state said unless it's like a super fund or some really horrific piece of property.
Yep, we had this, I brought this up at a town meeting a couple of years ago, maybe four years ago, and the lawyer advised us that unless it's like a junkyard or a chemical waste dump, yes, we'd be better off not to because you're going to have to keep doing it every year and it's going to sit on your tax bill.
Well, we're going to have to change something here before long. I mean, whoever's the landowner is responsible. If they have a trailer come in there and they rent it, then they're responsible for it because they're making all the money and the taxpayers are paying the bill, cleaning it up.
Well, I agree, it doesn't make sense.
And that's crazy.
That would probably, you probably have to do that under an ordinance. Yeah, so say that again, you could probably do it, but maybe something like under an ordinance for like a rental ordinance or land here or something.
If you allow a trailer to be put on your property and you collect rent and then it gets in arrears and it starts to deteriorate, why, why would the tax, why do the taxpayers have to pay to dispose of it when you've been making money?
Correct.
And it makes total...
That's a win-win.
So why don't we have Renee look into how we can legally do that? Ask him, right? And make a motion that we have Renee look into.
So just, I did a little looking and from what I can read, if you have a lot and you put three or more, you fall under a trailer park, which is what was under the state's statute. Because there's two on the particular lot that was the latest issue and because mobile homes, which had their own classifiers in state law, are considered real estate and taxed. So the homeowner pays the tax and thus making foreclosure the thing.
Right, considered real property.
So turning it back, looking through the rolls of the back, I think there were nineteen mobile homes at this time paying taxes of a couple to $300 a year. I don't know if it's worth it to the town to do an ordinance to stop taxing them, then we don't own them.
Well, that's, you just need to look into it all.
And this particular case that we dealt with a week, last time, this was an inherited piece of property from his father, so he really inherited a problem.
Yeah, but the whole, but the trailer was owned by the deceased person, which was the real estate that, you know, the, the landowner pays taxes to the town on the land and the person that owned the trailer pays the real estate tax.
Yeah.
You know, which is what we...
We don't really want to own the trailer, as we say.
No, we don't, because... Maybe stop taxing them.
If that's possible.
You can't, because no, you can't do a local town rule or something to change...
If they have posted exemption, it would cover the tax unless it's a high value trailer.
Well, so if the person dies, they stop paying the taxes, you still lost that dilapidated piece there, you know, or there's an unsafe vehicle or building.
Right. So I think it's definitely something we have to look at.
Absolutely, or we have to increase the line in the budget for building demolitions, you know what I mean? Because we're going to have to demolish nineteen of them at some point in time, no way, oh.
And again, I don't, I don't think it's right to demand the tax.
I don't think so.
I agree with the, with the ordinance.
I think so.
There is all kinds of state stuff around.
Yeah, that we can build off if we, if we like.
She made a motion that, we got Renee looking doing that, I'll second that.
All, all favor?
Oh, yeah, you already did, yeah.
You want to have a motion?
I got it, yeah, basically, Carol, yeah. I just didn't have the vote.
Okay, so now we're going to review the dangerous building document review. That would be appropriate now when it all falls right in, falls right into what we were talking about. So Kevin couldn't be here in another meeting, he didn't think he'd make it in time. So not sure. We might want to just table this until the next year or the next meeting.
I'm making a motion.
All in paper? Because I'm not sure why you have to look it up. So we have Charles Ness here. I believe he can present what he wants, whether or not, do you need Kevin here?
No, that's irrelevant. If you don't mind if I could just, see, I'm having a hard time standing.
Oh.
I'm just looking for reimbursement of the money I had to pay out for a lawyer for a frivolous two charges against me, one civil, one criminal initiated by your dog catcher that were summarily thrown out of court in the judge's chambers. And I don't, I don't think it's on me to have to pay up.
Chuck, who brought the charges?
Your dog catcher.
No, I mean, was it the state, the DA's office?
It was initiated by your dog catcher.
Oh, I know how that feels.
Were they, were they...
I've had three of them. I've had three of them and I, I paid the fines, so I know what you're talking about.
I was absolutely honest with your dog catcher. It was very obvious the dog was not in town, not here. It was very obvious that your dog catcher was breaking the law. I gave some paperwork to you where the, my lawyer through the judge said I did absolutely right asking him to leave when I got tired of answering the same questions over and over again. And he told me he could do and go anywhere he wanted to, anytime he wanted to. And I swore at him. And the next thing I know, I have a construction of a business charge. I called the police, I filed it, and this all happened within 20 minutes. I called the police and filed a complaint with the town office.
Who is, who's complaining up there? It's the same two folks, it's the neighbors. My understanding is it's the neighbors.
It's a couple neighbors up there, one of them...
No, no, I dealt with the same thing. And the way North Lubeck used to be is my dog went down the road, my neighbor would call me up and say, hey, I'm going to keep your dog there to the night, curled up on my couch, I'll let you go in the morning.
The problem with this is, that's all irrelevant at this point, the judge made the decision and the proof was overwhelming that the dog was not in town and could not have done it.
Oh, we dealt with the same thing.
Okay.
They were going to put my, put my wife in jail.
No, I had a guy...
They were going to lock her up, they were going to put her in jail.
There were a lot of problems there at the property just before my wife, my mother passed away.
Right, I'm saying...
I was told by the trooper that, the sheriff, that deputy sheriff that I spoke with, that from now on, you are to call me directly and don't take any crap off what's going on up there.
Well, we, we talked to our animal control officer, he came in, I, Jason, the rest of us were there, and he explained that he made a civil complaint of darn it large and explained that when he came to the property that you, as you said, stat him and told him to get off the property.
That's not...
And when he wrote on the complaint that he was not able to, that he was going to serve the, the little citation at the end of your driveway.
And did not do that. He came back on the property 10 days later.
Well, I, I'll, let me finish. So he submitted that, that declaration to the DA and it was the DA's office that changed it from a civil to a obstruction of, obstruction of government, of governmental employee to serve a citation. It was not him, he was not aware of that at all. He, he only, once it gets to the DA's office, it's up to them, so he was really...
His fine was $400. Look at, look at your dog catcher maximum and you'll see what the heck they want.
Well, he wrote that it wasn't the first time, so I think you're here today to see if you should be reimbursed.
It is not, yeah.
Not, not the case, we're not going to retry and...
No, it's already been thrown out of court, slapped out of court.
Well, then you chose to have a lawyer, so we, I don't know how we all feel about reimbursement. So Nancy, what do you think?
I don't feel it's our obligation to reimburse them.
I will talk to the DA's office, they're the ones that brought the charges. And we, we should sit, we should sit Kevin down. Kevin works for the state in that aspect, that's why he's CEO.
Excuse me, let me correct you, he works for you.
But he enforces state laws, state law.
But he still is contracted to the town.
Right, he's contracted to the town to enforce the state laws around animal control.
I, I understand when this is going to be, please don't, and I, put my leg down.
But, no, like the, like the CEO, as the co-enforcement, we can't tell him what to do as a board. And as a dog catcher, we can tell him what to do.
So he violated ordinances and we did have a conversation, his honest statement to the, to the, to the DA himself, where he kept asking me and I kept telling him, the dogs aren't here, the dogs aren't here. Well, I, I was tired of the bad guys.
Again, I believe...
So there was a conversation.
Again, I believe...
I'm sorry, you guys go do your thing.
I can do it, I can deal with pain.
My pain's in my leg, not your, not your dog catcher. All right, thank you.
General Fund, CD, we're getting better rates.
Do we need any mention or anything there or just going to just walk into the...
I believe...
Okay, I just wanted to be sure before I go...
Oh, he left.
Okay.
Make a motion, we're not going to reimburse them, do you want to...
Nope, I don't think we need to do anything.
No, no.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
We're going to...
No, no, we're...
General Fund, yes, Renee checked with Maureen, she was thinking of taking some money to go in the general fund that just sits there and gets like miniscule interest and input in CDs.
Are we, can we legally do that?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I have paperwork paper for you guys, you can pass down. The C M out with the CD, the term.
Yeah, it's in our...
Oh, it is, okay, I didn't know.
This is the cap for Maureen, yeah.
So what would, as a treasurer, what would you suggest that we, the term that we should put in?
You can vary it to have some, you know, three months, six months, nine months, whatever. You can...
I mean, it's, there must be a certain amount that has to be liquid.
Yeah, well, she, her amount of talking and being thinking that the max, five hundred thousand is what we shall come to that.
Putting in five hundred thousand.
Yeah, at the max. I mean, you can do one CD, you know, two or three, depending on what's the market turn, have them kind of rotating, so that we can...
Maybe you want to do a hundred thousand in each one because you've got three percent, three point seven five, four, four point two five over three, six, nine, twelve, that's pretty good. Well, then it goes, then three months comes to you, you can put it back in. Well, that leaves how much in undesigned, undesigned, six hundred thousand?
This is not, this is not undesigned, this is just going in the general fund and the input into CD, it's still available, you can go, close it out anytime, you can pay the penalty, but...
We should hear, we should be settled out anyway.
Remind me again, remind me again what our monthly, each other, yeah.
About three fifty, three hundred thousand?
About three hundred thousand, that's our bill.
There's certain months that it would be, you know, more like September when we pay the county tax.
Right, so it really makes sense that we have like a million set the role in the event of, so, okay, I could go five hundred thousand. So how much, so how much is left over that we're going to have that we're...
And you'd have one point five?
Okay.
There's two, we have two.
Sounds like a good...
Might be like one point more than, you know...
So you want to, you don't want to spread it out to three months so that you can do when you have to decide then if you need to redo it, is that too much paperwork for you?
No, the back of the paperwork.
Well, I, is it worth it, taking the 50 and committing to a 12 month for the 4.25? I mean, is the chance of us needing it?
That's what I was saying.
Knowing that we have two, you know, we, we have a nice... You get a penalty if you take it out.
But I don't know that we would spread it.
Would you take a penalty, would you take a penalty for what you take out or is it a penalty based on the full total, even if you don't take it at least?
The amount you take out.
But I mean, like, you know, knowing that there's like two, that we need one, we need like one to be sensible in regard to accounting principle, having at least three times your monthly, maybe more, but I think we, I think we can be pretty sure that...
You think we can do the 12 months?
I don't know.
And then not touch it, you know?
Because you still got, I mean, she was saying you got the 1.3 and...
Right, and we have a budget that we think is pretty accurate for what expenses are going to be.
Don't we have some lean months when we haven't collected the taxes yet?
Yes.
Because isn't that the money you're saying 1.3, but that's on paper, that's not totally collected, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
That's, I, I wouldn't put all my eggs in that one.
So what if we put six, what if we put half of it in 12 months and the other half?
What's, what's that?
In the bank right now, we have a little over $2,000, that's not coming from collective tax.
Okay, that is, I would put it in then.
Didn't bring it in.
If that's all we have, it has nothing to do with...
I'm not looking at trio balance, I'm looking at bank balance.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we go for it.
Okay.
Fifty-nine.
A full laundry.
The whole, 500,000 and 4.2, okay, well, the worst case scenario is we have to take it out for some reason.
Believe me, we have.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
On paper?
What a row.
Okay, then. Oh, and what, where does that money go? Just builds up, builds up in the general?
Yeah, we'll have more interest. Now, I have the paper right here, if you'd like to sign it.
I knew you did.
Flubber devil.
Flubber devil, right.
She's on it.
She did, she, she knew.
And I, Charles, happened to have...
I, no, that's good, you know, it's been a couple of years, maybe we can use some of it to like, you know, help break it out. It'll still be really...
I don't know if you're going to, Nancy, I think Carol will need a sign. It is, we'll have paperwork on this, like, you know, let them freak it out. You guys want to name it?
General Fund CD?
Yes, the general one CD. Okay, so they, you need me to sign it?
Yeah.
And you have the next, hey, we'll see if we're here next, oh, yeah, next week.
Yep, yep.
It's still the new fiscal year.
Yeah.
Is that it? I know, I know, I'm counting. Other, have any other business, other business, anyone? Public, public comment?
I have one.
Do you?
Yeah.
Do you like to make a public?
Yes, I'd like to thank, I know we had some people come out and help clean the sidewalk on Pleasant Street, kind of clean back. I came to Water Street one day, about a week or so ago, and saw it beautifully edged down the sidewalk, and I know for about the past nine years, I've done that. I didn't have to do it.
Oh, cool.
And I wanted to thank that crew for saving me the blisters of bringing the foot back of the sidewalk, I think they didn't want to fall out.
We're going to lose a trailer Friday, the town, try not to mourn, it's going away Friday.
Oh, really? So that means we don't have to pay...
It wouldn't, you know...
Would it be gone, was it?
It's going to be gone Friday.
Is it going to be gone yet?
No, no.
It's supposed to be, I don't think, who I think?
Who?
Who?
I don't know, we just heard about it, he...
Yeah. It's hard to get anybody to do anything.
Well, last, last time I worked, we didn't sign.
I'm fine, I'm fine. I know we did, I'm just waiting for the invoice.
So that's the 30th, well, that's perfect.
Yeah, and the...
Yeah, excellent. Oh, any committee updates?
Comprehensive plan meets tomorrow, we've been working with the guy from Sunrise County Economic Council, who has actually been really helpful because the state, you know, when they started comprehends, you know, 15, 20 years ago, then that department closed, now they're under a new department, and they have a whole kind of new set of guidelines that kind of what has to be in there and all, so he's been very informative and...
So he's been coming to your meetings?
He's been coming to the meetings, and he's the one that will produce the, the new piece with, you know, and, but the team has still got one topic, a piece along, but it's coming along, but, you know, it'll be next year's town meeting, you know, it's
and I can't come tomorrow, so I have another meeting. We're wrapping up the, you remember the municipal budgets and con, what do you call, conservation lab? That's wrapping up tomorrow. Oh, okay. So what about Marion?
Marion's going up June July, six cents.
I got that email, but I don't have the cash token.
Five now?
Six cents.
We put six into the...
Yeah, and we, we covered it. Last year I was told that they processed 12 million pounds, two millions. And that's...
Just Lubeck, all together.
All together, everything, yeah, all in all.
Is that 12 million from Lubeck?
12 million.
Just, just the whole place, for 12 million. I think Lubeck was 1.2 million pounds.
Yeah, number, we did add it up, but I can't remember.
I think it was 1.2 million last year.
Is it like a large increase, you know, from like year to year?
Everybody's way up.
Everybody's...
Ever since COVID, I mean, how does everybody order stuff now?
Yeah?
Yeah, paper, email.
I mean...
Cardboard, we put lots of cardboard.
I wish people would understand that those little Amazon boxes can be collapsed and taken down and recycled.
Or we get collapsed.
They do.
Whenever your plot doesn't fit, shove it back in the box, take the label off.
Sir New Billam, my name is, is outrageous.
Just like if you don't know the bags.
Marion New Billam system is outrageous. I go over there by ticket, by line every month, and I got a discrepancy every month. Wait, last two months, I've established with the New Billam.
Hey, you want to talk, go outside.
I've complained at a new...
You have to, we'll take it up next board. What, what happened was, one of the board members decided that we didn't have to go up on the price.
Yeah.
And they're losing $10,000 per month.
I can see why with the billing, because every time I've had to correct it, it's been in their favor, not ours.
Now, at the time, I made a motion, I made a, I made a motion in November to go up to six cents. Since then, we lost over $100,000, Marion has.
So you didn't get the votes?
No, I got the votes in November, then somebody walked in and said, we don't have to do this, and he said, oh, you're the head of the UT, you're right.
Oh.
So they downed it, not naming any names. Then, then they decided that, hey, we just lost $100,000 and we're going to do something.
So people absorb that, that, that loss?
Marion does, Marion does.
And that's unincorporated territory, that's the money?
Mill does, the business itself.
The business itself, they downed it, very low numbers.
I can see why. And this last bill...
I was ready to rip my hair out.
The last bill I did, they overtrashed us 1,400.
Wow, thank you for being thorough in following that.
Oh, you wouldn't believe it, she, she'll call me and she'll say, is this mill yours? I say, uh, let me see that, yeah, she catches everything.
Good for you too, an hour and a half early to do a job.
That one, he doesn't miss anything.
Yeah, that's obvious on the turn. Yeah, I don't know if the county side even managed.
No, we still will track it a little bit.
I didn't know they were looking.
He's sitting in the sunshine.
Yes, it's a nice, any public comment?
No. We had a phone one evening last night.
You have to understand...
And a hearing on Shoreline phone, he's four hands, and he had a, what, 15 maybe, told him?
Oh, and were they all supportive of the...
They, they, there was only one that the town itself had put in, the rest of the changes were all straight mandated and just bringing it up to the state code.
And the one that was...
Changing 75 feet setback to 170 feet setback.
And what's the committee's decision around that?
The committee put in for 100 feet.
And is staying with that?
Well, I guess the town, it will go to town vote.
It's a good town vote.
Isn't there another planning meeting before...
They will private screen then another hearing meeting before the...
So you have to do the state codes, correct?
Yeah, there's no way around it.
I think the, the issue what they had is that the one that's set back by state is 75 for building and the committee's moving forward, the idea that it should be 150 and for some shore property owners, 75, you know, 75 feet is a lot of feet on a piece of property, so some people object to doing it greater than the state recommendation, which...
We can do that.
We settled on 100, but any town can change to increase the number that the town...
Maybe more restrictive, but not less restrictive.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, well, you have to protect our shoreline, so I see your point.
But, yeah, I don't think we have to be greater than what the state is recommending and, you know, I can do the argument of, you know, sitting like, you know, building on a lot.
Taxpayers will decide.
Yep, because then it's the same thing at the town meeting, you can say you're setting aside 100 and they can vote to, they can vote down to 75.
So can we change the...
If they vote no on it, it will just maintain at 75 feet setback.
So, okay, so...
And I got, I got one more thing, we're going to get a new sign out in the town thanks to Barbara and you and my wife. So it's going to happen, no taxpayer money whatsoever.
What, what is the sign for? Oh, marvelous. Oh, yes, yes, I was in on that.
Everybody takes the pictures there, Bunky, so happy, he's the one that started the whole thing.
Yes. Yeah, it's a really pretty sign. So who's making the sign?
Bracket signs and design, doesn't work now.
Yeah, it's really nice. When's it going to be ready?
Not sure, they may give them a go ahead.
It'll look real good, and it's going to last.
That was very different amount of beauty to do.
It was absolutely the right thing, perfect, excellent choice.
Yes.
Well, Barbara helped, so it was all good.
Speaking of signs, I was asked to mention that there are some rather confusing signs or lack of which on Water Street, and there are people parking, double parking, illegally parking in front of the Water Street and the private boat next to it and then across the street, and it's becoming fairly congested, so they're requesting that perhaps a new, no parking sign.
They just put them all down there, they're all over on the road, no parking, no parking, no parking, no parking.
They just paint them, they're the ones that's on them, like, but we, you know, they're all there.
So I...
Oh, they put them on the ground, they have the road, it's still there. I'm not sure that people like to see that, they don't, they don't...
People just don't read, they just ignore.
But there is, there is a car parking present across, who knows that, to me, to see the sidewalk ends, and so that's a little confusing there. Should that be a sidewalk? I mean, I don't think it is a parking spot.
The problem...
That's definitely our right of way.
The problem with that car being parked there, when somebody comes out of there with a boat, they can't make the swing, so they got to paint, they got to repaint that there.
It's our right of way, it's not a parking spot.
So maybe we should request, maybe they could put three or four more of those, you know, like, a few more of those, no parking, no parking, it's on the road, instead of just like if they space them nicely, they look nice, maybe they could be a little intense in the purchase on that corner that...
Those diagonal lines.
Yeah, or something, you know.
Well, I think, I think maybe they might be asking for an actual sign that says no parking, you know, with a pole and a little sign, because we could make a motion to have that done. No, no parking on this side of the street.
You don't have to say no parking, no parking.
We could put one right across from Coles, right in that spot, sign, like, dead center.
I don't know about that, but...
Why not? And we could put the other two, people are going to want to walk in.
I think Ellen and Glenn could both want in that poster of them.
They could on the door, no parking.
The question is, is the sidewalk stopped there because it used to be people pulled it in park where the property has been built, but I believe it should be a sidewalk to the Lost Fisherman's Memorial.
Yes, I agree.
And I think we need to have a sidewalk to expand to the Lost Fisherman's Memorial, but I don't want the no parking to like, it was such beautiful scenery there.
Oh, it's gorgeous.
So maybe they could, maybe they could just do it with paint for the sidewalk, to identify like a walking space, and then I would make the motion that we get some vertical no parking signs besides the painted street to truly... Or you can make it look like a crosswalk for now until we make it a sidewalk.
Can we maybe, maybe when the guys come in and do some paving and that comes about?
Yeah, they pay.
Maybe they could save a couple feet.
Yeah, to do something there, something there.
I'm sure they, I'm sure they'd throw that in at the campus.
I'm sure, I'm sure Dan will have to negotiate that.
I'm sure we have public works, you know, what our goal is.
So maybe you want to make them, because I, I believe, Jason, that that is...
Not a parking.
Well, it's part of the right way of the road. It's so, so many feet from the middle of the road, you have to go measure it first.
The pins are behind...
If it is, in fact, so I'll make a motion that in fact that is part of the town right of way from the road, that we would make it a sidewalk to the Lost Fisherman's.
I can show you where it is.
That's a good idea.
I can show you where the pins are, several pins, they're behind the telephone pole.
Oh, that one that's where the property was?
There is enough room for sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, there's one behind there, then it's, then where they... There's one behind there, and then it's, then what do you got?
Then it means there not be.
Yeah, even if you take, I mean, you know, you probably can't do the stone to match the sidewalk, but like a visible marked out walking.
And then, of course, you have the treatment plant where you have the water right there where you can't do sidewalk.